This meeting is called to order Monday, January 14, 2019 in the Commissioner's Chambers at 6:00 PM. Can we have the roll call, Ms. Gwen?
Yes. First Vice Chair Beloski.
Here.
Don't forget to turn on your mic. Here. Thank you. Second Vice Chair Wykoff.
Here.
Commissioner Hearn.
Here.
Commissioner Rappa.
Here.
Commissioner Klyt, she's not present. Chairman Noble.
Here. And on to approval of the minutes. We review the minutes in our packet. Does anybody have any changes?
Move to approve.
Second.
Can we go to vote?
Sure. Commissioner Hearn?
Yes.
Second Vice Chair Wykoff?
Yes.
Commissioner Rappa?
Yes.
First Vice Chair Beloski?
Approve.
Chairman Noble?
Yes.
Oh, and...
Can we modify the roll call, please?
Yes. Commissioner Hearn?
Here.
Commissioner Klyt?
Here.
Second Vice Chair Wykoff?
Here.
Commissioner Rappa?
Here.
First Vice Chair Beloski?
Here.
And Chairman Noble?
Here. And on to approval of the minutes. We review the minutes in our packet. Does anybody have any changes?
Move to approve.
Second.
Can we go to vote?
Sure. Commissioner Hearn?
Yes.
Second Vice Chair Wykoff?
Yes.
Commissioner Rappa?
Yes.
First Vice Chair Beloski?
Approve.
Chairman Noble?
Yes.
Oh, and...
Can we modify the roll call, please?
Yes. Commissioner Hearn?
Here.
Commissioner Klyt?
Here.
Second Vice Chair Wykoff?
Here.
Commissioner Rappa?
Yes.
First Vice Chair Beloski?
Approve.
Chairman Noble?
Yes.
Oh, and...
Can we modify the roll call, please?
Yes. Commissioner Hearn?
Here.
Commissioner Klyt?
Here.
Second Vice Chair Wykoff?
Here.
Commissioner Rappa?
Here.
First Vice Chair Beloski?
Here.
And Chairman Noble?
Here. And now on to, well, we approved the minutes, right?
Did we get everybody on the clock?
Yes.
Okay, we had enough for, okay, to pass. And now on to new business. I believe the city staff has something to add?
Yes. Mr. Chair, I would like to, for the purposes especially of notifying the public, point out that the staff is recommending continuance on Item C, PD 2018-02, petition by applicant CPWG Development. The staff does not have enough material in hand to provide a full review and recommendation. So we're suggesting that this be continued to another month when we've got a chance to work with the developer and get those changes made. Since some of those changes could affect the building, the layout, side of the layout, we need definitely to have them in place before we can actually provide a full review, as stated in the packet that you received.
I'd like to make a motion that we have a continuance on Agenda Item C, PD 2018-2, based on the fact that we're missing a lot of the information on which we can make an informed decision.
I second that.
Can we call a vote?
Sure. Second Vice Chair Wykoff?
Yes.
First Vice Chair Beloski?
Yes.
Commissioner Hearn?
Yes.
Commissioner Klyt?
Yes.
Commissioner Rappa?
Yes.
Chairman Noble?
Yes.
And, Mr. Chair, I also like to make a point, should anybody be interested in that item in particular, that of course, a whole new packet would be presented before it comes to the board, and that would all be made public, and anything online would be updated. And we're, of course, always available at the city to meet with anyone who has questions. And please give us a call if that's the case. Thank you.
Okay, continuing with new business. Agenda Item A, RDV 2018-02, petition by applicant Global Consulting Engineers, Inc., as agent for property owners Marcia and Marcia... Marcia and Michael Buckley, to extend along the line of an existing encroachment located at 340 Bogus Yega Drive for an addition of a bathroom needed for handicapped accessibility.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chair, if we could suggest, usually the staff would make a presentation first, and sure, I don't know, and then give the applicant a chance to get up using normal quasi-judicial procedures.
Okay, so we have a staff or presentation?
Yes, Ms. Rowan will make that presentation.
This is redevelopment 2018-02, a request to build a rear addition to a legal non-conforming home. This is the location at 340 Bogus Yega Drive and is located in the R2 district. The property spans between Bogus Yega Drive on the south and Bogus Yega Avenue to the north. Here's the current condition of the rear with the proposed addition, and a survey showing the addition on the lower left-hand side. The structure is considered a legal non-conforming structure because the house sits within the side yard setback. The side yard setback is a minimum of five feet. The house currently has a setback of 4.17 feet. In August 2018, 340 Bogus Yega received an administrative waiver to extend into 10% of the rear setback, which is what you see on the survey. The proposed addition is flush with the house on the east and west elevation, and therefore is also within the side yard setback. Since the building is a legal non-conforming structure, and the proposed addition extends into the non-conformity of the structure, we had to bring this to the Planning Commission. And here is the proposed addition with showing adequate drainage and their gutter system, so they will not create a drainage issue to the neighbors. We also received a notarized letter of support from the neighbor to the east. And here are the elevations of the proposed addition. And that is all.
And, Mr. Chair, to explain a little bit more, the staff is able to give an administrative waiver to setbacks for certain purposes, one of which is handicap accessibility. We're allowed to waiver only 15% of a setback at a maximum. And then in addition, there can be no other non-conformities on the site when we offer that. So in this case, because the side was non-conforming, we had to come through this redevelopment process, which you'll recall we just recently created within this last year, for this very type of thing. So that is the reason why one setback variance did not come before you, and this other one has.
Very good. Do we have any comments from the Planning Commission, or should we have the...
Yes, if you have any questions for us.
Any questions of the staff by any of the Planning Commission? Pretty clear. Excellent. Good comment. And then anybody from...
We'll go to see if the applicant would like to address the commission.
Please state your name and address for the record.
City evening. My name is Mazen Murray, Global Consulting Engineers, 8003 Terrace Arbor Court, Tampa, Florida. And I'm here tonight on behalf of Mr. and Mrs. Buckley of 340 Bogus Yega Drive, and basically requesting your approval.
Yes, and you'll have to speak directly into it, or it doesn't pick up. Take it just a second.
Good evening. Okay, it's working. Good evening, honorable members of the commission. My name is Mazen Murray, and I'm with Global Consulting Engineers, 8003 Terrace Arbor Court, Tampa, Florida. And I'm here on behalf of Mr. and Mrs. Buckley of 340 Bogus Yega Drive, requesting your approval of this addition on the rear of their single-story legal non-conforming residence. I really can't add much more to what the staff has provided, and just asking for your approval based on their recommendation. And we thank you for your time and your service.
Do we have any questions of the engineer? Okay, so do we have anybody from the community that would like to speak on behalf or against? All right, sounds good. Thank you, sir. All right, no questions from the commission, then let's someone make a motion?
I move that we approve the item 2018-02 that's on the agenda to add the handicap accessible restroom to the facility, the single-family residence.
I'll second it.
Go to the vote.
Commissioner Rappa?
Yes.
Second Vice Chair Wykoff?
Yes.
Commissioner Hearn?
Yes.
Commissioner Klyt?
Yes.
First Vice Chair Beloski?
Yes.
And Chairman Noble?
Yes. Okay, moving on. New business. Agenda Item B, PD 2018-01, petition by applicant John A. Bozak, also known as Jack Architect, as agent for property owner Brian Zalinski and Zalinski Rentals LLC to request rezoning of 1.136 acres consisting of lots and 14500, 14550, 14560, and 14503 Gulf Boulevard from R-3 to PD and lot at 106145th Avenue located on 146th Avenue East located on 145th Avenue East, from C-3 to PD to allow for a single mixed-use development consisting of a two-part 56-room hotel, retail and associated surface and structured parking with a pedestrian bridge over Gulf Boulevard. Do we have the staff to give a presentation? I feel like a zero after reading all that.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We apologize for that, but sometimes the legal way to do things is not the most efficient. So, yes, this is a proposal to create a single development of contiguous properties across from each other on Gulf Boulevard at the 145th and 140, just below the 146th blocks. And we have a presentation. There are several points that may seem a little bit repetitive in cases because this being a PD, it really does rezone the property, and the intent is to rezone... To use a PD, you rezone it with specifications and design specific to that piece of property. And there are findings that you have to make in considering making these kind of changes, and the code gives out a very long list of requirements that have to be met in putting a PD together. And so, to make sure that the record's clear, I'm going to go through that with you. I won't address them in as much detail as you have in your packet. If you have any questions about any of that, be sure to ask. So the purpose of the PD, which is important to keep in mind, is that it accommodates integrated and well-designed developments, that you have this, as I said, zoning that's specific to that particular project, that it gives the opportunity for the city to approve things that are a little more flexible than the standard code would allow, have a little more design element required of the buildings. And in exchange, the city gets things out of that. For instance, it helps further their compatibility with the area or furthers the comp plan in some way. And it is supposed to be, provide you with a functional, high-quality design. And you can't always specify design in the rest of your development review proceedings because the code doesn't require particular kinds of design, only kind of density and intensity. But in this case with the PD, you can actually make input into that. The whole community does. And of course, it encourages that mix of uses that we are always talking about as being advantageous from a planning standpoint. The neighborhood meeting is required for a PD, or any of those large developments, you may recall that we just recently created that process. This neighborhood meeting has been already required for PDs. You want to, usually, I think the code requires a 200-foot radius for notice, but given the size and the shape of Madeira Beach, sometimes the property or developer will request an even larger radius so that they're sure they're getting as many people out as they can for notice. In this case, they did hold the meeting here in City Hall to make it easier to access, more accessible, and it's close enough to the site that that was appropriate. Video and transcripts were taken. And it's important to note that no assurances regarding the design or the function were given at the meeting, other than those presented in the plan. The code requires that if the developer makes assurances in that meeting that they will change this, or they will do that, that those have to become conditions of the approval. And in this case, they didn't make any assurances other than just what was already expressed in the design itself. Now, I broke these down a little. I'm surprised it's starting with Building 2, and I don't think it actually is... No, this is actually Building 1. I apologize for that. But just to give you a quick breakdown of what you see on the front of the plan, in case it was too small for you to read. The site area for the building on Gulf, on the Gulf, the one on the beach, is 20,170 square feet. We show you there that the footprint is 12,000 square feet, which is 61% of the site. The height is the DFE, which is the base flood elevation plus two feet of freeboard. And the building itself then is, on top of that, is 52 feet and six inches, for a total of 66.6. The air-conditioned area of that building is 36,274 square feet, and it has five stories over parking. And then they have rooftop activities or area programmed as well, which is pretty standard for these buildings. Oh, and then they reversed themselves. I'm sorry. So this is actually Building Number 2, and it has a 29,300 square foot. The footprint of the building is 73% of the site.
Very good. Do we have any comments from the planning commission? Or should we have the...
Yes, if you have any questions for us.
Any questions of the staff by any of the planning commission? Pretty clear. Excellent. Good comment. And then anybody from...
We'll go to see if the applicant would like to address the commission.
Please state your name and address for the record.
Good evening. My name is Mazen Murray. I'm with Global Consulting Engineers, 8003 Terrace Arbor Court, Tampa, Florida. And I'm here tonight on behalf of Mr. and Mrs. Buckley of 340 Boca Seega Drive. And basically requesting that your approval.
Yes, and you'll have to speak directly into it or it doesn't pick up. Take just a second.
Good evening. Okay. It's working. Good evening, honorable members of the commission. My name is Mazen Murray and I'm with Global Consulting Engineers, 8003 Terrace Arbor Court, Tampa, Florida. And I'm here on behalf of Mr. and Mrs. Buckley of 340 Boca Seega Drive requesting your approval of this addition on the rear of their single-story legal non-conforming residence. I really can't add much more to what the staff has provided and just asking for your approval based on their recommendation. And we thank you for your time and your service.
Do we have any questions of the engineer? Okay, so do we have anybody from the community that would like to speak on behalf or against? All right. Sounds good. Thank you, sir. All right, no questions from the commission? Then let's someone make a motion?
I move that we approve the item 201802 that's on the agenda to add the handicap-accessible restroom to the facility, the single-family residence.
I'll second it.
Go to the vote.
Commissioner Rappa?
Yes.
Second Vice Chair Wykoff?
Yes.
Commissioner Hearn?
Yes.
Commissioner Klyat?
Yes.
First Vice Chair Belaski?
Yes.
And Chairman Noble?
Yes. Okay, moving on. New business. Agenda item B, PD 2018-01, petition by applicant John A. Bozak, also known as Jack Architect, as agent for property owner Brian Zalinski and Zalinski Rentals LLC to request rezoning of 1.136 acres consisting of lots and 14500, 14550, 14560, and 14503 Gulf Boulevard from R-3 to PD and lot at 106145th Avenue and vacant parcels 09-31-15-87048-0000-0710. Located on 146th Avenue East and 09-31-15-54306-0000-0030, located on 145th Avenue East. From C3 to PD to allow for a single mixed-use development consisting of a two-part 56-room hotel, retail, and associated surface and structured parking with a pedestrian bridge over Gulf Boulevard. Do we have the staff to give a presentation? I feel like a zero after reading all that.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We apologize for that, but sometimes the legal way to do things is not the most efficient. So, yes, this is a proposal to create a single development of contiguous properties across from each other on Gulf Boulevard at the 145th and 140, just below the 146th blocks. And we have a presentation. There are several points that may seem a little bit repetitive in cases because this being a PD, it really does rezone the property and the intent is to rezone. To use a PD, you rezone it with specifications and design specific to that piece of property. And there are findings that you have to make in considering making these kind of changes and that the code gives out a very long list of requirements that have to be met in putting a PD together. And so, to make sure that the record's clear, I'm going to go through that with you. I won't address them in as much detail as you have in your packet. If you have any questions about any of that, be sure to ask. So, the purpose of the PD, which is important to keep in mind, is that it accommodates integrated and well-designed developments, that you have this, as I said, zoning that's specific to that particular project, that it gives the opportunity for the city to approve things that are a little more flexible than the standard code would allow, have a little more design element required of the buildings. And in exchange, the city gets things out of that. For instance, it helps further their compatibility with the area or furthers the comp plan in some way. And it is supposed to be, provide you with a functional, high-quality design. And you can't always specify design in the rest of your development review proceedings because the code doesn't require particular kinds of design, only kind of density and intensity. But in this case with the PD, you can actually make input into that. The whole community does. And of course, it encourages that mix of uses that we are always talking about as being advantageous from a planning standpoint. The neighborhood meeting is required for a PD or any of those large developments. You may recall that we just recently created that process. This neighborhood meeting has been already required for PDs. You want to, usually, I think the code requires a 200-foot radius for notice, but given the size and the shape of Madeira Beach, sometimes the property or developer will request an even larger radius so that they're sure they're getting as many people out as they can for notice. In this case, they did hold the meeting here in City Hall to make it easier to access, more accessible, and it's close enough to the site that that was appropriate. Video and transcripts were taken. And it's important to note that no assurances regarding the design or the function were given at the meeting other than those presented in the plan. The code requires that if the developer makes assurances in that meeting that they will change this or they will do that, that those have to become conditions of the approval. And in this case, they didn't make any assurances other than just what was already expressed in the design itself. Now, I broke these down a little. I'm surprised it's starting with building two. And I don't think it actually is. No, this is actually building one. I apologize for that. But just to give you a quick breakdown of what you see on the front of the plan, in case it was too small for you to read, the site area for the building on Gulf, on the Gulf, the one on the beach, is 20,170 square feet. We show you there that the footprint is 12,000 square feet, which is 61% of the site. The height is the DFE, which is the base flood elevation plus two feet of freeboard. And the building itself then is, on top of that, is 52 feet and six inches for a total of 66,6. The air-conditioned area of that building is 36,274 square feet, and it has five stories over parking. And then they have rooftop activities or area programmed as well, which is pretty standard for these buildings. Oh, and then they reversed themselves. I'm sorry. So, this is actually building number two, and it has a 29,300 square foot. The footprint of the building is 73% of the site. It comes to a total of 52 feet from the ground up, and the air-conditioned area is 16,962 square feet. It is three stories. On the Gulf side, what is proposed is an upscale hotel with the bigger rooms that you find nowadays. And I'm sure the developer will go over that with you in more detail in terms of use, but restaurant and the workout area and other programmed areas for a hotel, standard hotel, on top of ground level parking. On the other side, it's a smaller building. It's only three stories, two over the parking on the ground. And those two would be larger, family-oriented rooms around a courtyard up at the front. And then also, there would be retail on the ground, which we very much appreciated and which, as you know, staff encourages, to keep the pedestrian scale and interest along the street. That's a concession that developers make, fully understanding that it's, we wouldn't normally require it of regular zoning, and it's one of those things we want to see if they're going to get a PD approval because it's expensive to put anything on the ground floor in the floodplain. So, they will have to develop at a higher standard, and it will be expensive. Just to give you an idea, this is the property on the Gulf side as it stands now. This is looking north from in front of that property. Directly east. And you could see the parking lot on your right is part of the property. And then that's the parking lot and the building that exists there now to the southeast, directly south. And this is the county's park to the southwest, which is directly south of one of the buildings and southwest of the one across the street. So, that gives you an idea of what the area looks like. Now, we have to review for consistency with both plan, the zoning, and with the comp plan. There's actually no change of use or designation requested for this in the PD. The reason this PD is being requested is in order to accommodate greater height. I know that we've talked about before the limitations we have with the plan as it stands right now. The comp plan allows for certain densities and densities of use which we cannot get to because we have height restrictions in the zoning code that keeps everything at 40 feet or lower as a cap. So, once you've got a floor worth of parking, there's no way you can get high enough to get the density and intensity that the land use allows. That's why we have so many PDs come through the city. It's the only way to implement the land use in most of our designations. So, the uses that are proposed are permitted in both the land use and the zoning for these properties. Current proposed use for the building on the west is seasonal tourist-oriented for the west side in keeping with policy 1.8.6, the future land use policy. And on the east side, the proposed use for that is hotel, retail, and associated structured parking, which are also allowed by that policy. The evaluated, it was evaluated as a single site, as I said, because roadways do not break up a site in accordance with the county's definition of contiguous. Now, this is standard, but sometimes the type of road can have an impact on whether you consider something adjacent, but it does, and so it's questioned. They don't, they say they're not adjacent, but they are contiguous. And contiguous is the measure you have to meet to have a single development plan for a PD. So, I did give you the quote from the county's plan there. Both the floor area and the density are calculated on a project-wide basis because of that, allowing them to put a little bit more on one side and keep it lower density on the east where it's adjacent to residential. Consistency with the standards and practices. We are required, as I said, to meet a very long list of requirements for site plan. Typically, a PD would be defined as required concept-type plans. You wouldn't get full engineering and full design and architecture and everything at the PD level. The reason for this is that it's extremely expensive, and what you're asking for is a particular use of land. And people don't typically want to invest hundreds of thousands of dollars in engineering and architecture when they're not even sure they can use the land for the intended use. So, typically, when you do zoning, you get a concept-type plan. Our code requires us to bring a whole lot of detailed information in that you would normally get later in site plan development. So, what the staff will do is we review it in detail to ensure that if additional changes need to come in later, for instance, your DOT permit, which is impossible to get before the zoning is changed anyway, or things like that, that those kind of changes, any changes to those would not necessitate dramatic or substantive change to the building or the layout. So, as long as we know that it's potential for it to be approved this way, and we've looked at enough details for engineering, architecture, and such drainage, we go into quite a bit of detail, but we don't ask them to present permits that they aren't physically able to achieve yet. So, we have assurance, having looked at this, that it will be regulated in accordance with the adopted land development standards. It'll meet all provisions, of course, of stormwater, traffic impacts, safety, coastal development, floodplain management. All the buildings will meet the Florida Building Code and the floodplain management criteria, and that the development review process will assure that level of services are met at the time of impact. The design furthers the comprehensive plan in that it provides the retail on the ground. It reduces parking footprint by structuring the development. It proposed proposing a pedestrian bridge over Gulf Boulevard. We don't know if they can get that past DOT, but we remain ever hopeful. It's the attitude of planners for some reason, no matter how complex. Paying, by paying careful attention to architectural detail, scale, and buffering, and by consolidating the development of several lots and concentrating the parking function, it actually will reduce conflicts off-site. I explained the height restrictions. The unified development plan facilitates the distribution of the density, and the building height issue is resolved. The PD is the only method of doing that, and the structure and density are designed to step down towards the residential. The impact of the development, as I said, adequate facility is available for all facilities or will be demonstrated by the provider at the time of impact. If that can't be shown, then obviously the site plan is not approved. We can't move forward. But we do know that there's potentially adequate facilities and ways for them to meet their requirements, and so it remains up for them to show that they have, but that is a potential still. The site design and building development will only be approved through the site plan process, again, if levels of service are met. I know that's a bit repetitive, but we have to meet more than one finding there. Development with the inclusion of the staff conditions, and you'll note in your staff packet or your commission packet, that's a long list of conditions. The reason for that is really that site plan requirement because the site plan requires so much detail of a PD, which you didn't normally see. Unfortunately, it becomes necessary for us to list all of that detail as part of the PD approval. We have, we know that the additional information that we have requested can be provided, and we can work out any details without having to make any dramatic changes to the building, as I said. And so, we're comfortable saying that those, along with those conditions, the plan could be, is recommended for approval. In addition, it should be noted that it also serves the public interest in that the redevelopment, it brings about redevelopment of antiquated and vacant property, promotes infill development, provides scale appropriate to tourist accommodations, as is required by policies of the comp plan, and promotes a mix accessibility and pedestrian supportive development types. It also provides a way to reduce traffic conflict with the consolidation of multiple entries into single entries, provision of pedestrian bridge, and the upgrade of current traffic circulation and access standards. The same with drainage, remembering that a lot of this is very old and never did have any appropriate drainage. And so, when we redevelopment, we have a chance to improve the drainage from, and water quality and quantity management. It'll improve the built environment to improve the facility provision, as I just said, and meet standards of design that are current, improve the built environment with aesthetics, enhance the value of the property and surrounding properties, provide retail services and associate parking, and enhance beach accessibility adjacent to and in support of the public park next door. It meets all land development requirements when the staff has had a chance to review it in completion with all of the conditions met. And that that includes all 21 of those conditions and their subsections. So, if you do recommend approval, we'd like to have that mentioned specifically in the motion. That is all I have for staff recommendation and review. I know that the developer's agent has more detail about how the buildings actually lay out, but those design-type issues internally are really relate more to the development itself, not to the planning recommendation.
I have a question for you, Linda. On a lot of these items, it says missing information. Do we, do we have any updates to that since the packages were delivered?
No, we haven't had any addition. We want all of that still.
Okay.
Any other questions from the planning commission to the city?
Since it's above the five stories that's permitted?
Actually, in this area, the height restriction is by feet, and it would only allow them to go to 40 feet total. And so, it is, what they're proposing is five over parking, which is generally what's been discussed publicly is what they'd like to keep as a standard here in town. You could not possibly get to five stories.
Is the city supposed to get something in return for...
Yes, what we get in return in this case, as I said, was we've requested that they put retail at considerable expense on the ground floor, even though that would not normally be required.
And I didn't think FEMA allowed that.
Yes, FEMA will allow that. You just have to waterproof it. It's more expensive by far, yes.
And so, what are we getting?
We are getting, we are getting a mix of uses, which we would not normally be able to require. They've put considerable extra effort into, as you can see, the design as it's shown as being kind of an upscale design. They've stepped back the development on the east side to keep it at two stories over parking so it was consistent with the neighborhood. Have provided some extra buffering through their drainage at the rear of that lot so as to prevent any kind of conflict between uses. And I think that that pretty much sums it up. Extra, well, they've kept the footprint smaller on the Gulf side so that they can put more landscaping in. Those are the, usually what you look for is more open space on the ground. You may remember that I had said that the impervious surface area or the building footprint is only 61%, and they can usually get to 80 or 85. So, they've left a lot of open space on the ground.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chair? I just hit, okay, we're looking, I'm just looking before hearing the developer speak on this proposed project. There's a total of 93 parking spaces. A lot more are on the east side. So, that's the importance of having the pedestrian bridge, correct? So, people, I mean, we're evaluating this with total number of parking spaces, correct?
Correct.
Because there's a lot more on the east side, and the rooms are, you know, a lot more on the woods.
Pure rooms, yes. Yes, and the, and the purpose in doing it that way was to try to put, to keep more of the parking away from the beach so they could have more open space on the ground.
Yeah, okay. Are you comfortable with those numbers?
Yes.
The staff is?
Yes.
Are you also comfortable with the amount of retail space that's designated?
Yes, actually, they're providing more parking than the rooms would necessarily require, and that added parking has to do with the retail component.
Okay.
You would want to share that to some extent, but with the hotel, especially in our location, you know, we've talked a lot about hopefully getting to the point that people will come into town and park and then use some other means to get around town in their own cars. So, once people are at the hotel, you want them to stay put. Most of the year, it's not going to be at full occupancy, but we stay pretty heavily occupied here. Still, the difference is that in a unit of housing, you may have two to four cars per house, whereas in a hotel room, people usually show up with one car for a room. So, there's a little extra parking here, but that's because we have requested that they add that retail in, and they need the retail space.
Okay, thank you.
I've got one question for you relative to the walkover bridge.
Yes.
Have you had any experience that? What's the likelihood of that really happening? I mean, I think it'd be a great thing.
Well, the state has, the state has approved them all over, all over the state. Yes, it would be nice. And remember that tentatively or conceptually, they had also approved it with the town center.
Right.
So, it's not a completely new idea to them. It will be up to the developer to try to champion that through, although if, if approved by the commission, then the staff would do anything we could to help facilitate that, obviously. We think that that location would be particularly advantageous since it's so close to the county's park as well. It would, it would just provide one more opportunity for safe crossing.
So, my follow-up question to that is if the, if that were not approved, the Plan B would be a pedestrian crosswalk. Is there anything that you've discussed or heard from DOT because there is already another crosswalk about 75 yards to the south of that? So, would they amend the crosswalk plan? Or were you going to have two, one right after the other?
No, they probably would not allow another that close. They have been reticent to discuss any additional actual on-the-ground crosswalks along Gulf at this point.
Mr. Chairman, that's very attractive to me to have a pedestrian crosswalk because it is, we do have crosswalks, we do have flashing lights. People don't use the crosswalks, and people don't start flashing lights. So, this would provide a wonderful outcome for this and maybe generate more of those.
It's like Frogger.
No, they don't.
It's a problem. You become blind to it because you see it so much, I think is what happens, or you get to the flashing lights and nobody's there because they keep flashing a long time after people have already crossed. You get used to there being nobody there, I think, or, or people are distracted too, especially vacationers.
I got one more question, if you don't mind, Mr. Chairman. Relative to the pedestrian bridge, I seem to be fixated on that right now, sorry. But is there a provision in the plan for the maintenance of that? Is there a point at which someone determines who, how, or when it gets maintained?
Right. At the time, it's not, we'll make sure that there's a provision in there that it's, the maintenance requirement is to the property owner. It's not a public.
Right, so that, that doesn't become any version of public property?
Correct. It's a good point. We will add that in.
Even though it's, it could be construed as a public use, right?
Yes, and you can add that to your conditions that are already before you if you'd like to do that before it goes to the commission.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I wonder, Linda, if you wouldn't mind explaining a little bit. You mentioned rooftop.
Yes.
Like a recreation place, is that what?
Usually, the taller, the hotel-type buildings or some of the condos as well come in with a deck on top where they, they have sunset viewing, or sometimes they hold gatherings of some sort, like sometimes weddings or things of that nature. We didn't specify what they could use it for. If you are concerned, you can specify that. If you are concerned, you can specify that or hours of operation. Those are the kinds of things that can go into a PD. If you have concerns, you can make recommendations to the commission. Thank you.
And the parking might be a better question for the developer, but is there, will there be parking available for the public that just wants to use the retail or are they just going to park on the street?
No, that is the purpose in the extra parking is to provide for the retail. We would have to require retail parking by code. They can address that and give us assurances that that's what the parking is for, but no, the intent is that retail customers can park as well.
Any other questions for the staff?
I have a question. So you say it's an upscale hotel. Do we have an idea in the, what, ours are going to be an upscale restaurant or a rooftop bar?
We can't really regulate by scale. I'm just saying that that's an expensive building.
Okay.
With large rooms, we know that. And they're going to have to figure out a way to make that work financially. They had talked about wanting it to be kind of a focal point within the community, which is why the.
Like a boutique type hotel?
Those involved, actually, yes, live here in town and they wanted it to be kind of a statement.
All right.
Piece or location, but they can address that more directly. We do want to be careful about not putting conditions in that relate to a specific, like, business or a specific business plan because everything that goes into this becomes ordinance. In order to change it, you have to go all the way back through the process.
Then we, Mr. Bozak, please state your name and address for the record.
Jack, you'll need to use the handheld.
The handheld you gotta use, sir.
Yes.
Good evening. Jack Bozak, I'm the architect and the agent representing the owners of the property. The, basically, I wanted to review that, I'm from St. Petersburg and out here at the beaches also. Basically, the, the primary use of a PD is to allow an objective and creative and flexible use of a property that allows you to do a little more than just take this piece on this side of the road and this piece on this side of the road and handle them both independent of each other. The idea when you get a parcel that has the potential of being something exceptional or a landmark piece of property is to take the thing into a PD and be able to be a little more flexible in the, in the combination of the uses between the sides of the streets. For example, you had asked about a restaurant, yet we do have a restaurant planned on the beachside. We do have retail space. We have planned, we have roughly 40 excess parking spaces for retail, public, other uses, and we have, I believe it's 10 bicycle spaces and four motorcycle spaces that, that allow us to have more than enough of the kind of traffic that you want to try, that will be accommodated by a facility like this. The, you know, the idea was when the owners of this property came to me, or the, the people that are having it under contract and the owner, essentially, we started out with a relatively typical building, primarily just a boutique hotel. Nice, but quite honestly, they gave us the opportunity to come back and present something because if you stop and look up and down our beaches, there are not probably four sites left of any size that you could have the opportunity to create a landmark piece. Everybody knows about the Don Cesar. It's a landmark piece in St. Petersburg Beach. Everybody sees it coming across the expressway or when they drive up and down the Boulevard. The other unique part about this piece was the fact that we have the, the county parking lot to the south that opens a tremendous view of this building coming to the north. We thought this would really be the opportunity to present that facade that you see that allows us to, to really have something that, that hits you as you drive up and down Gulf Boulevard and create a landmark, a comment more or less, or a landmark statement as to this building that, that really has a lot of uses involved, the retail, the parking, the restaurant, that allows public use outside of the boutique hotel users. So the idea was to put something in there that was sort of a mini Don Cesar type appeal, something that was a landmark that would attract the public and, and the, the other residents of, of Madeira Beach to the site. The idea of having that big parcel to the south that creates a great view of the building as you come up Gulf Boulevard to the north really gave us an additional edge on trying to put this kind of property together. I want to start by saying that there are existing, we are only adding essentially nine new units to the combined sites. When you look at the schooner property and the, we call it the schooner property and the adjacent hotel, as you know, they're, they're functionally obsolete, really very negatively postured buildings that are long past their, their effective life. And we thought this was a great opportunity to have enough land here to do something that was landmark and potentially with putting in the footbridge going across, we felt that it really tied the properties together very well, created a traffic situation that didn't put more traffic crossing Gulf Boulevard, but enabled both the public and the, the people, the, that are the tenants and the, or the guests in the boutique hotel to transverse back and forth. Kind of coincidentally, we, one request we had, we did meet with the neighborhood meeting. We had a great neighborhood meeting, a lot of good reception there. We met with the commissioners on an individual basis to review the ideas when we first started on this plan. Coincidentally, the one thing we did get a request for was that the, the, they weren't crazy about the arched walkway across Gulf Boulevard, so I think we may flatten that out and make it more of a level walk across. You can see it's kind of a little bit of an arch thing. You can see it in here. It's kind of shown as an arch. The, the idea was that we would have primarily a suite hotel with really full guest accommodations. You know, all your first-class hotels have a restaurant. We have one here. We have some clubrooms. We have, as I say, the retail space across the street, which in the middle of the courtyard across the street, let me see if I can point it out. Well, it doesn't show real well on this one. The, we have a fountain area that sort of create, you can kind of see it on the rendering. There's a, an open area in the middle there between the two retail spaces. Where's that, where did that pointer go? I lost track of it. Yeah, yeah, there's. No, I, all right, I have one. Here we go. I brought my own in case last time. We ran short. All right. Okay, this isn't working really well either. Can you see that or not? That one actually works better, Linda. If you see, but as the footbridge comes across, you'll see a space between the two awnings that you see on the other side of the road that create the two retail spaces. You see a fountain in the middle of that, right there in the, in the middle location. So that's kind of, the whole approach was to create a really pleasant atmosphere, not just run a strip of stores across the front, have a little fountain area where you can walk through from the parking or you can, you know, walk into the retail areas from the parking lot in a little bit of a pleasant courtyard. We actually designed that once before in a building and they never did put the fountain in when the recession hit, so that happens. The, the other thing that, that I wanted to let you know is, yes, there have been occasions where FDOT has approved footbridges across. They like them. They're expensive as all get out, but in this case, with ownership on both sides of the road, it's, it's really kind of an opportunity to do this. They not only approved the one up here in the town center, I also know that a project I worked on up in Indian Shores back before the recession hit, they approved one up there. I did have a preliminary conversation with FDOT and they were, they were favorable. They didn't think this would be an issue in this location with ownership on both sides of the road. Yeah, yeah. Pardon me?
The Don Cesar?
Yeah, yeah, right. Yeah, the Don Cesar does have one. Yeah, I didn't even think about that, but I was thinking about ones that were recently approved in the last 10 years or so. So I do know that that's a great possibility approval-wise, as I said, and in preliminary discussion, FDOT was positive about it. Naturally, you go through the formal approval process, but the one big benefit we have is we own the properties or the people own the properties on both sides of the road and it, you can guarantee the connection. It's not like you're going over to somebody else's piece of property. So it works out pretty well that way. Basically, the 56 units are 40 units on the Gulf side, which is very close to the number that are there. As I said, we're, we have a net increase in the combined properties of nine units over the existing 47 that are in place. As you know, the, the properties are in pretty bad repair. They've been sitting for quite some time. The Gulf front parcel is, is a VE14 parcel, elevation 14, which is of course a velocity zone and it's designed as such on pilings and with all, in, in keeping with all the codes. The, the, what I call the Gulf Boulevard side of the property is a, an AE12. It's not a VE. And as Linda had mentioned, you can flood panel a, a property like that. It doesn't have to be elevated a whole bunch above what its present grade is. Couple feet elevation and about four or five feet of flood paneling and you'd, you'd meet the criteria for flood paneling. So it's, it's a very achievable end. The schooner, as you know, has been in disrepair for quite some time. The combination of these properties into the PD zoning allows us to, to really move these things around and make it work. The rooftop deck, we, we felt like everybody tries to put rooftop decks up there for weddings and for, you know, sunset viewings and all that. So we did put that up there. It wouldn't be, we didn't intend for it to be something like a nighttime bar or a daytime, you know, a big open bar top. We have the restaurant facilities and the beachfront access that you can kind of see in the, in the umbrellas that you see in the front, even going out into the beach that typically the umbrellas and the, the chairs that are allowed to go out there with the covers, you know, are shown on that. So we'd have direct beach access, the pool, and as I say, all the, all the hotel-related facilities, the restaurant and some clubrooms, that type stuff. The units would all be suites. It would be a boutique hotel, probably have a, a pretty relevant flag with it. Most of the ones we've been doing lately do. You can kind of see the scale of the building next door in that little line up in the corner. Can I borrow that pointer or somebody? You're, well. Yeah, that's all right. Yeah, there was one. Kurt had one. Anyway, the, what I was trying to point out, I forgot what I was trying to point out now. Oh, the, yeah, the building on the other side, you can kind of see the lines that we drew in for the height of the building on the other side. It's not much difference in height. We do have the architectural elements going above it, but that's basically it. The basic height, the height of the building is the 66 feet above grade. BFE, as I said, is 14 plus a two-foot freeboard, which I don't know whether you're, how many, I'm sure you're familiar with the freeboard element involved. Let me see what else I. Basically, the statistics that we, the ISR is relatively reasonable for the, for what we were into here. We have an ISR in the 60s. We have a, on the Gulf side, the combined ISR is, there's an allowable of .85. The combined is, is below that. The FAR is at 1.7. Under the combined parcels, it could go as high as 1.5. So I think we've got a reasonable approach to the thing and I think it'd be a credit to, to Madeira Beach to have something that is really just goes at it as a landmark facility and something that, that people identify with and bring their guests to and, and when they have visitors in town and it's someplace you can be proud of. That also has some visibility. It's not tucked away entirely behind a bunch of other buildings. So having said all that, I think it's an opportunity to create, as I say, a landmark piece. I think that we put a lot of thought into this with, with the people, the developers, and we feel that it would be a credit to the community and we'd love to have the opportunity to put this together. Any, any other questions?
Anybody have any questions?
I do, Mr. Chairman. Okay. So the retail, it's, it's hard to set, and our picture was so small, okay? Is on Gulf side and it's right in the front there, right?
It's on the other side of Gulf Boulevard. You see how the tower, how the, the walkway comes across? Those two things that look like an awning, there's, and there's a tower, the tower that's on this closest corner to you. If you go down to the ground from that, you see the awnings that go across the front. There are two of them. And then the fountain's dead in the middle of that. You see it underneath that arched opening? So it's two, two spaces that, that have a fountain in the center to kind of break it up.
The home building now.
It's where the home, yeah, right, right. Yep, so it's right there on the.
And then on, question. Then on the south side of the big building on the beach side, what is on that ground level?
Well, the very ground level is parking, but the, the first.
This.
Oh, of that one. The ground level, I'm not sure, you're putting, on the beach side, you're saying?
Yeah, what's over here?
Well, that's the public parking area on that side.
That's the county.
That's the county parking lot.
That's the town right there.
Yeah, that's the big county parking lot.
Miss Belazki, you're going to need to sit in your seat so that we can pick you up on the microphone.
Oh, I'm sorry. I get excited. Sorry.
That's the county's beach access.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, that's the public parking lot south. We show a lot of landscaping around to, to try and.
Yeah, that's.
Soften that into the building from the parking and, but that is the way the public parking lot's depicted there.
What exactly then is on ground floor?
Oh, ground floor is parking and.
That you see through?
Valley service, yes. And then the, there, at the half level, you see that pool in the front on the, on the Gulf side.
Yes.
That's at the half level. And then at, just slightly above that level, you have the restaurant and the, and a couple clubrooms that are just, you know, like game rooms or rooms for an event like a wedding or anything like that that was, wanted to be held in.
Would there be like a lobby area?
Then there are four levels.
Would there be like a lobby area?
It's lobby area, yeah, it's the lobby, it's the check-in area.
And then you would take the elevator to the restaurant?
Yes. There's nothing on the ground floor that's habitable space other than just the entries to the, to the, to the elevators and that type stuff. So we kept it all above floodplain to be FEMA compliant. And then there are four levels of rooms above. And so that's, that's how we come up with the, the five levels above parking. All in all, we felt like we really wanted to try and do something that was just, you know, really knockout and, you know, it, it looks like it's coming together pretty well at that.
Does, does the developer plan on running this hotel independently or being part to tie in to larger hotel chains or anything?
Well, you know, typically.
Or is that irrelevant?
Typically, you wind up, once you get your approvals in place, you start to shop it to, to.
Okay.
There are a lot, now, the trend lately, I'm doing a bunch of hotels, and the trend lately's been all the big chains like Marriott, they're coming out with all these new smaller boutique hotels.
Uh huh.
Like, is it Marriott? We're doing a, oh gosh, we're doing one that up in, in Clearwater at Feather Sound that's a, gosh, what's the name of that now? Legends or something like that? They have, they've got like five new chains that are all geared towards boutique hotels because I, I think for two reasons, especially on the beaches, there aren't that many big sites where you can put a 150-room, you know, Hyatt or, or anything. So I think they're all kind of gearing towards management of smaller level boutique hotels and we're seeing quite a bit of that. So I know there are three or four of the new boutique hotel chains that people are looking at. Typically, you get into your management decisions, once you get your approvals in place and you can show them exactly what every room layout is and exactly, you know, how every detail of it works. And then they have their own criteria, by the way, that they put in place too, that they want you to make the rooms up a certain way and do that.
Isn't there some case study that that brings a better clientele to an area often?
Yeah, it does. The two things are suites, which we, these are, and, and the boutique hotels are a little more controlled and they're, they're a little more, you know, when you get into 150-room, 200-room hotel, you've got the demand of, it's easy to fill it during the season, but then you sit with, you know, 40%, 50%, 60% occupancy in the off-season. So the big hotels really get hit and, and really there are no sites available anymore for any of them. So the boutique hotel trend, you know, really is a lot more, it, it fits a lot better in the kind of community like Madeira Beach and some of the, the beach towns. So I think it's a much better move. All right, if you haven't got any other questions, I'll.
Any other questions? Any other questions?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
I just want to clarify for the record that it's, it's understandable. Everybody'd have questions about who's going to be operating it, but that can't be part of your considerations or included in your finding. I just want to make sure in the record that was stated.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you, sir. Okay, so we'll open it up to the community. Anybody would like to speak, please keep it to three minutes. Anybody? Okay, we'll close that community discussion. Sounds like we'll move on to, if we have a motion.
I would like to make a motion that we approve PD 2018-1 for the petition by applicant Jack Bozak as agent for property owner Brian Solinsky and Solinsky Rentals to request zoning of the one point one-three-six acres consisting of the lots noted in the record that we will allow for a single-family mixed-use development consisting of a two-part, fifty-eight-room hotel, retail and associated surface, structured parking with a pedestrian bridge over Gulf Boulevard, subject to the restrictions and recommendations placed on by city staff, as well as adding for a provision for details that specify the property owner's responsibilities for maintenance of the walkover and that it could be used for public, general public use.
I second that.
Go to the vote.
Commissioner Cliot?
Yes.
Commissioner Hearn?
Yes.
First Vice Chair Beloski?
Yes.
Second Vice Chair Wykoff?
Yes.
Commissioner Rappa?
Yes.
Chairman Noble?
Yes. Thank you, Gwen. And moving on down the agenda to five, old business. We have nothing to discuss. Planning Commission discussion says nothing, but does anybody have anything to add?
Yes, Mr. Chair. I just want a couple of quick housekeeping issues. One is that we will send you information, of course, the next month. It is time for you to, actually past time for you to elect your officers again. It's something you're supposed to do annually. And you're welcome to keep people in positions or to change up, but you'll be able to do that at the next meeting. So we'll send you all the procedures as required for that. And in addition, wanted to remind everybody how important it is for you to receive, to use the iPads to receive your email from the city. The reason for that is, and I know some of you, we've discussed, that should there be any records request or controversy over any vote taken by the plan board, it's possible that your records could be subpoenaed, including all equipment that you've used, which would mean you would need to turn over your personal computers and all of their content for review by the courts. And to avoid that ever happening, we highly recommend that you keep your plan board email separate and use the equipment that we've given you for that purpose.
And if someone inadvertently sends you a text message or an email regarding official city business, always forward that to the, your city email address. That way it'll be there and you won't have to search for it later. If you make a habit out of it, it's much easier.
Since we've been using the iPads, I've noticed no one is using my work email anymore. So it's really, really been helpful to have those. And speaking to city staff, she wanted me to ask that we all use them more often and maybe we could get over the, printing out the paper copies.
Just don't write to each other because that would be sunshine violation. Don't write to each other by email. Just receive information and shuttle it through Gwen and Linda only, but don't talk to each other by email.
But if we just review the packets, it's all I'm using it for.
Some cities go paperless and they're doing that and sometimes people like to have paper while they're sitting here, so.
And you'll notice that we, we put the plans on your iPads this time so that you could blow them up and look at them as opposed to try to review the eight by, eight and a half by eleven version of those plans. And we, we don't want to require them to provide all of you with a full set of documents.
It's nice to look at the plans and, and to review the packets, but the object of getting the iPads was to go paperless.
Yes, eventually.
So we need to keep that in mind because this packet was this thick today.
As soon as you're comfortable, everybody, let Gwen know individually. I'm comfortable now. I don't need the paper anymore. And then if you do want the paper, let Gwen know too, so you can make sure you can read it.
We would be glad not to be using that many trees.
Right.
It's hard on a planner to put out that much paper.
Mr. Brooks, our procedural deal with the email going back and forth, we should never reply all. Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, don't reply.
Right, don't ever hit reply all. If you ever want to reply, it's just strictly to Gwen.
If someone sends an email and has everybody on there and someone replies to that, to you, then now you're both in violation of sunshine law.
Right.
So never reply all. If you get something, don't reply, just read.
Thank you.
Don't do any group emails or group responses.
And you can always forward those back to planning so that we have a record of what's going on, if you want to make sure that it's on record that you've been contacted.
But we can reply to a resident, yes, thank you, I reviewed your email. That's okay.
If you get something from a resident, the danger is always you can't differentiate sometimes whether it's legislative or quasi-judicial. So whenever you get one from a resident, you could say, thank you, or received your email and I forwarded it to the planning department through Gwen. Forward all those to Gwen so she can put it into the file.
Very good.
That way it becomes part of a record and don't have any discussions on email with...
I think everyone I've ever got was, everybody was on it and even the city of staff. So, okay, thank you for the update. And that's always good to be reminded of those. Anybody else have any open discussion? Our next, next meeting is scheduled for February eleventh, twenty nineteen at six PM. Everybody's good with that, then this meeting is adjourned.